Thank you for waiting, being patient. We're going to reopen the open committee meeting of the whole and special meeting starting now. First item on the agenda is personnel principals contract.
Board of Education, it's my pleasure after our discussion in closed session to recommend to you the new principal for Riverside Brookfield High School starting July 1st of 2019. My recommendation after three rounds of interviews that involved both teachers, parents, students, the administration, and myself, the top candidate that came through that process was Dr. Hector Freitas. Hector is currently the principal at Aspira Academy in Chicago. And Dr. Freitas will, my recommendation is that we offer Dr. Freitas a two-year contract to serve as the principal of Riverside Brookfield High School.
Want me to read the resolution?
Please.
Resolved the Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County Illinois hereby appoints Dr. Hector Freitas as principal of our Riverside Brookfield High School effective July 1st of 2019 and approves this two-year performance-based administrative contract with a starting salary of $135,000 as presented and discussed during the February 26th, 2019 closed session meeting.
Second.
Do we have any comments, questions?
We had a chance to discuss it within the closed session, so.
And Ms. Sierra was part of the second round interview, so Ms. Sierra if you have any comments you would like to add.
No, I'm just excited to welcome Hector to RB. Welcome.
All right, let's go for the vote.
Mr. Esca?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Hector, would you like to come up and make a few comments to the board?
Good evening, Honorable Members of District 208. First of all, I want to thank everyone here for bringing me on as the next principal of Riverside Brookfield High School. Everyone here works many long hours. I saw that you have meetings twice a month, so I know everyone here works hard to provide the best opportunities for the students and teachers of District 208. I am humbled to have this opportunity and I am grateful, and I promise everyone here, the students, the teachers, the parents, the community, you guys are only going to get my best. I'm here to be the best in academics, to be the best athletically. I'm here to be an exemplary leader and to make sure that Riverside Brookfield is the best high school in the state and in the state of, in the country. There's a lot of talent here, there's great programming, there's student centeredness, and I believe I can help refine and add value to this culture. Everyone here should be proud of not only the board members, the superintendent, but of all the students and teachers behind me, because I saw that list of the agenda, there's many accomplishments to celebrate tonight. I don't want to take any more of the time because I want the students, teachers, parents to be recognized. I am humbled and I am grateful to be the next principal of Riverside Brookfield High School. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Special lady principal.
Thank you.
Special lady principal.
Thank you.
Thank you, superintendent. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda, recognitions. I know people have been waiting around for a bit, so.
Let's get these.
Please. Please.
Student recognitions, 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. An RB student has been named a finalist in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. About 1.6 million juniors and more than 22,000 high schools entered the 2019 competition by taking the 2017 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, and approximately 15,000 finalists throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Congratulations to Elise Wojcak.
So, Elise here, congratulations.
Next is our chess team. The chess team competed in IHSA Chess Tournament in Peoria. The team finished seventh in the state for schools in similar size and sixtieth overall out of 124 teams. Congratulations to the following individuals. Megan Sroka, Rokus Lukasevich, Alexander Mercado, Sarah Cuevas, Peter Giannettos, Neil Kennan, Leva Lukasevich, Chute, thank you Kristin, and Joseph Vitak.
Thank you to Mr. Matty, the sponsor in the fabulous email about their accomplishment.
Good point.
Great to read.
National German exams. Congratulations to the following students who took the National German exam for 2019. The results are German 2, gold medal, Victoria Hansen can also compete for the travel award. Bronze medal, Katja Maywood, Abigail.
Congratulations. Can you save this one from your group as well? Thank you.
Sorry to cut that short.
Abigail Morrissey, Academic Achievement Award, Ryan Lott, Zoe Masurkowicz, Jessica Herrera. Now we'll move on to honors German 3. Silver medal, Lena Stoiber. Achievement Award, Sidney Lindenberg, Mia Hiligoss, Tara Janey, and Sean Parr.
Congratulations. Can you save this one from your group as well? Thank you.
Sorry to cut that short.
Abigail Morrissey, Academic Achievement Award, Ryan Lott, Zoe Masurkowicz, Jessica Herrera. Now we'll move on to honors German 3. Silver medal, Lena Stoiber. Achievement Award, Sidney Lindenberg, Mia Hiligoss, Tara Janey, and Sean Parr. And finally, AP German 4. Gold medal, Anne Sophie Pacraca, Native Speaker category, and Jonah Raith. Bronze medal, Sylvia Harvin, Gustus Gladstein, Julia Maywood.
Congratulations, Julia.
And Christina Tapick. And our final for German is Achievement Award, Jake Strand, Sophia Gose, and Alexander Thomas.
That's Sarah Frauler. I think that's it for recognition, so parents, this is a good time if you want to.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Steph, actually, we have one more student report, the Student Association Report, right?
Yeah, Student Association Report's next.
Student Association, want to come up?
Come on up.
Oh, this is my favorite.
You look here from what's going on around here.
And Michelle, weren't you, you were on the interview process, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, hello, everyone. I'm Michelle, I'm the president.
I'm Sarah, I'm the Director of Communications.
I'm David, I'm the Students' Folks' President.
I'm Taylor, I'm the Treasurer.
And Jessica, I'm the Secretary.
There are a few things we wanted to talk to you about today. First was the eLearning Day and some of the comments we had received from students. Starting off, we were really proud of how our teachers really handled it, we knew it was kind of a last minute thing, but thought it went really well overall. One of the main points of confusion was centered around attendance and how it varied day to day. There was a form that we had to fill out, in some classes it wasn't super clear on if it was the same form for the second day, and it was just one of those things, it being two days in a row, that it was kind of hard to dictate. And then, the second thing was, all of the assignments that we had gotten were pertaining to what we were learning in class, but in some classes we didn't necessarily talk about it when we came back, so it was a bit of a discrepancy there, but then some of the pros were.
Yeah, we had a lot of pros. One of them, a lot of the students really endured it, they said they would like much rather make up their day then than have to make it up at the end of the school year.
Just pressed.
Yeah. And then, also, it really like taught us time management, because we had assignments that we had to do, and then, but instead of like being at school and having to do, like being forced to do them here, we got to do them at home, we got to like choose like when we do them and when we take our own breaks, so time management was something we really learned during this day, and it's really good, because at college you're not going to cancel school, they're going to send out assignments for us to do, and that's like kind of what we learned during this day. So, yeah, a lot of students liked it overall, and we feel like there's a really big accomplishment to get it over, to get the first one done and to do it.
So, this past Wednesday, we had our second annual blood drive, so from that we had a total of 100 donations, which ended up saving, or will save, 300 lives. And then, from this past year, that's over 200, so in total, RB donations have saved over 600 lives because of it. And actually, this past one, we ended up being able to have no passouts, no like.
[Laughter]. It's a great.
Good blood drive.
Very happy about that.
Okay.
We had a little bit of a schedule change in ours, and it was before our fall sport, our spring sports started, and so it was in like a bit of a densum, which helped out, like having more students help donating and helping save lives.
Okay, great, very good.
Oh, another thing I wanted to bring up is, there was a leadership conference, February 20th, it already passed, I attended, it was at Addison Trail, and I went with Mr. Mannan and a few other kids from RB, and then we met with a bunch of like multiple other schools in the area, and it was really interesting, because we got to listen to a bunch of like great speakers, and they gave us a bunch of good ideas of how to get students more involved and make RB more of like a community and like a home for everyone. And so, a couple ideas we took away from the conference that we're going, as of right now, we're trying to incorporate into RB are aux battles during lunches and RB Remind. And for those of you guys who don't know, aux battles, so, it's, so like, people would go up and they would, like, let's say would have a theme, so one thing could be like, "How is Mr. Mannan feeling like this Monday?", and so then everyone, like, they'll pick a song in their head, and then they have to plug in their phone and match it and do a song, and then whoever wins is based on the loudest applause for that person. So, we're trying to do that probably like on Mondays, because Mondays are always a little harder for students and teachers and parents as well, just to lighten up the day. Yeah. And then, the RB Remind, it's for students, teachers, and parents, and it's just like another way to get like the word out about like upcoming sport events, plays, and music concerts, and like more specific to that.
The app?
Yeah, the app. So, we were putting like these flyers up around like the school, and like, so students can join and add, like, add it, and then you just get a bunch of like announcements and reminders, so you can, it gets like the students, everyone more involved and able to go to more activities.
So, something that's coming up for us is next week, Thursday, we're doing, we're having Custodian Appreciation Day, which means, we do it every year, and it's, we dedicate a day to the custodians, the, like, the day shift and the night shift, and we host a lunch, actually in this room, for the day shifts, and then we have dinner a lot later that night, and we have like festivities throughout the day that like appreciate them, and we have nest of acknowledgements, and a lot of other fun surprises. It's really, really important to us, because it helps facilitate like a really awesome relationship between the students and the people that work in this building, so we're really, really excited for that, and it's coming up pretty soon.
And that's about it for our reports.
Make sure you meet the new principal as you walk out the door, and thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Hector, this is a good time to run if you want to run. It's up to you.
Opening.
I know that the student newspaper is here, and then Mr. Skolnik's from the Lambert, but you don't need to meet with him if you don't want. I'm just kidding, Bob.
Get it.
Want to talk to him, you can talk to him outside if you want.
All right, next thing on that is the president's report, I don't have anything to report, superintendent's report?
I have no updates, there's no updates on anything with curriculum or facilities and finance, personnel or policy. Mary Ann, you might want to close that, just for us a little.
Or tell Bob.
Maybe tell Bob to move a little further down the hallway.
Do we need to open that other door then?
Yeah, I can't close.
Yeah, I'll open that one. So, I have no updates in my, there's no, none of my councils had a meet this month.
Is there any, mind if I ask one question?
Pardon?
Is there any further update on the facilities, are we squared away for the pool for this summer?
Oh, we have, we have, we're waiting on another meeting with our subcontractor to go over the controls for the air handlers, and we're picking paint colors of the ducts right now, but nothing, nothing specific, you know.
We're still on schedule?
We're still on schedule.
We originally planned?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Principals' report?
So, bear with me, I have quite a few items to.
We got most of your report from the kids all right.
That fall under my report. So, first, I'd like to start by thanking our PTO President, who's actually here tonight, I wasn't anticipating, Julie Laubi, she was instrumental in coordinating like a mini day of service on our Institute Day on February 15th. It's the first time we've done this, and she worked with Guardian Corps of America to come in and had several of our students come in on their day off to pack over 770 kits for the homeless, and then Guardian Corps immediately goes and directs, directly distributes the kits to homeless veterans throughout our surrounding community. And we had students from the Boys and Girls Lacrosse Team, Girls Soccer Team, as well as Helping Paws, but none of that would have been possible without Julie's work, and she worked really hard to pull it off and to get donations, so I just wanted to begin by thanking her.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
You signed up for a four-year term, PTO President?
I got another seven and a half years.
Okay, great. It's on TV, Julie, just a minute.
Then, at the building level, we've been busy with sectioning, we've completed several rounds of sectioning for the 1920 squares, so figuring out how many classes we need to offer within each department based upon the student requests, and those rounds include the instructional coaches, Kylie, the Assistant Principal of Curriculum and Instruction, Beth Augustine, our Director of Student Services, our Special Ed Staff, as well as myself and Dr. Skinkis. We still need to have one more round to finalize things. We will be able to meet our staffing needs within the FTE that Dr. Skinkis estimated back in November, and we will report out at the next board meeting about the courses that are under 20 that we will be asking for board approval for. Last Friday, we gave juniors their second practice SAT for the year, and juniors can stop by room 246 to pick up their scores if they're not in cap for the Saturday practice sessions, and this practice was to prepare students for the state test, which is on April 9th this year. Our Spring Musical is this week, students are downstairs busy practicing, putting on the finishing touches, so it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 PM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. The show is Newsies, it is double cast, there are a lot of students involved, it's really great to see. The tickets are $12 for adults and $5 for students. Also, under the principals' report, I have two things that are in the board packet. The first one is on Transitional Math, which begins on page 11, I believe, in the board packet, is the memo, and so, this is a draft MOU with Triton regarding Transitional Math for your information. We currently have an arrangement with Triton College for our students in college algebra, so really not much is changing. Right now, when students take our college algebra course, we have the arrangement with Triton that they can earn developmental credit at Triton, so that means when they go to Triton, they can immediately take credit-bearing courses in math. Currently, this credit isn't transferable to any other institution, so the state is changing how they are doing things, and so the format of this partnership is changing a little bit. And so, what that means is that students can use this credit at any community college in the state moving forward, and they can also use it at other colleges that sign up to be a part of what's called Transitional Math. So, I know like Southern is participating, Eastern, ISU, and then some private universities as well. So, we will continue to use our existing college algebra course to fulfill the MOU like we are now, but we will change the name to STEM Math, because that's the pathway that we're offering, and that's what the state calls it. The reason they call it STEM Math is because this will be more of a project-based class, and there'll be more applications that focus on science and technology applications, it's not necessarily what everyone envisions as a STEM course, but there will be more application problems and hands-on problems, but that's really the only change, everything else is really changing, it's just between us and Triton. There were some questions submitted about the MOU, so I will go through those.
Before you go there, because I'm missing part of your point, I don't want to be dense on this, Kristin, but we currently, do we have three classes that we offer that are available there?
No, so I was going to get to that, so we only offer, that's okay, so we only offer the college algebra course, and that one fulfills both developmental courses that Triton offers.
Okay.
The way the Transitional Math is set up is STEM is the highest of the three Transitional Math courses, so by offering the STEM Transitional Math course, students can, students will be able to take any of those college courses listed, whereas if you offer technical math, they can only fulfill the technical math going straight across. There's a whole big flow chart, but that's not in the MOU, but the reason we're offering the STEM Math course is because it gives our students the most options to take any of the courses.
And so, the reason we had Kristin present the MOU to the board tonight is because it requires a superintendent principal signature, but we just wanted to make sure the board was aware of it.
I got it.
We don't have really any change, I mean, if, if we make one change, all nine schools that are in the DVR program had to make the same changes, so.
Correct.
It wasn't like something where we're just negotiating on our own behalf, it's kind of a group MOU that, and this is what the best terms we came up with.
And this is something that was modeled to off of the state's version of the MOU, and then locally you made some changes.
So, I'd like to comment, I'm grateful that you're doing that, for any of us who have had kids that have graduated here and have done well in math, they go to Triton and find out they have to take some of these developmental courses and you lose a year. Happened to my son, was not happy, and I wish he would have had something like this when he was here, so I'm really thankful, thank you for looking into that and getting it up to par.
Yeah, I certainly want to credit Lindsay Minot and the math staff for, you know, really partnering with Triton on like the logistics of going back and forth. The state is also planning on, I don't know if it'll be next year, if it'll be two years out, but doing the equivalent with English as well.
That's fantastic.
And so, for some reason, English has always been behind math when it comes to this partnership.
That's fantastic.
There were some additional questions submitted on the MOU, do you want me to go through them?
Yeah, whether they can change or not, like the one that says at one place, you know, they have to be certified high school teacher, another place it says they can be college teachers, which is it?
Yeah, so I spoke to Triton on that today and asked why the community college math instructor was referenced, because it's a little confusing, and that's in there because right now we have a liaison for Triton, who is a community college math teacher, and they serve as our liaison between us and Triton, and they can provide any sort of support that we need, and they're going to offer that same person, our liaison, moving forward, and so that, the whole purpose of that was to say that they will also be a qualified math teacher.
Okay. You don't have to address the other, they're more, now let me know, you can't change the agreement anyway, it doesn't matter.
Okay. The one thing I will address, the local advisory panel, so that is solely Triton's responsibility, and then we get to participate, but Triton is the one that's responsible for pulling that together and getting the six high schools to come in and participate on the panel.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions before I move to eLearning? Right. So, as you know, the purpose of eLearning is to provide students with an opportunity to virtually learn course material when RB was otherwise, or would have otherwise been closed, so I want to go over a brief report of how we implemented eLearning on January 30th and 31st, and that report begins on page 20, and I'd like to begin by highlighting the attendance for the week. So, as you can see, the daily attendance for the week was highest on our two eLearning days. Wednesday was 96% roughly, and Thursday was 92%, and as the students on Student Association told you, as well as the other student feedback that we collected, the reason I think we had a drop in attendance was because we were surprised, students took attendance on a Google form, and we were surprised at some of the confusion that students had, teachers would vary the format slightly, some would put last name, first name, some would put first name, last name, some wouldn't have like a message after students submitted the form to show that their form was actually submitted, so we had some students submitting that form like eight times to make sure they got attendance. So, we realized there were lots of like tiny little things regarding that, and part of it was because some teachers had one Google form for the same, the same Google form for both days, so that created the confusion, which is why I think we saw a drop in the attendance.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a setting on there too, where you only submit once, so if the teacher forgot to untick that box and they made it for both days, then there's, they couldn't submit for their attendance the second day.
Correct. Can I just ask, how did you gather the feedback? Did you ask a certain group of students, was there a survey, like?
So, we asked the Student Association Group, as well as the Student Advisory Board, so I meet with them along with Dave and Kylie once a month, and that is a representative group of students that represent our student demographics, and so it's about 24 students, and so they showed their feedback, and then some teachers distributed surveys to the students and shared their results with me as well. For parents, we discussed it at the PTO meeting, we had Lunch and Learns with the staff, we also on Institute Day devoted time to getting their feedback, but then also having teachers share lessons within their department, and we also picked out lessons that we thought were really great, that we'd like to see moving forward, to highlight those within each department as well. And then as an administrative team, we debriefed, so that was all the feedback that we collected. The expectations are there for you, I don't think I need to go through and read them all, there was a question about how we monitored them, so in terms of monitoring teachers' availability on email, I was able to work with the Director of Technology to run a report on when teachers logged into their Gmail accounts and when they logged off. In regards to SchoolAG, we had every administrator look at the SchoolAG page of the staff members that they evaluate to not only make sure they met the procedural requirements, but also that the assignments were relevant to the curriculum. I provided some sample lessons for you on the next page. The sample lessons, I just tried to pick some lessons that really represented the different types of activities that teachers were doing. This was a mix, some were from the first day, some were from the second day, but they all just are one lesson. There were some questions on this. The Education Challenge Ed, which is one of our PE classes, students had an option to do a series of push-ups. I forget what it's called, but students had to do one push-up, and then students could take a break, and then they had to do two push-ups, and then they had to do three push-ups, and they worked their way up, and girls and boys had different requirements. The other question that was submitted was on Mathia, and students, that's a software program that we use that corresponds with our textbook in Algebra 1, and this is something that students do on a weekly basis, and students have to get about 75% correct to move on to the next module. And then lastly, I already touched a little bit on the stakeholder feedback, you can see some of the feedback that's there. Again, for the most part, we got very positive feedback, but certainly with a brand-new initiative, there are things that need to be improved, and so we have a list of what those modifications are that we'd like to make, and on Monday, myself, the Assistant Principal of Curriculum, and Bridget Wilmot, our Instructional Technology Coordinator will be meeting to go over those and come up with what we want to change or modify for next year, and then present that to the staff for getting, for moving forward. Before I- Before I open it up to questions, I'd also just like to thank Bridget for all of her hard work in this. We wouldn't have been able to pull it off without all of her professional development that she provided to the staff, as well as the union and the teachers. You know, we were, we had to speed up our timeline probably two, maybe two and a half weeks, and so we weren't quite ready to roll it out to the staff, and then the cold weather hit, and everyone worked really hard, a matter of 48 hours, to make sure that this was not only up and running, but that it was a meaningful experience to our students. Any questions?
Good job, Kristen.
Yeah, can I just say, my only thought on it, and I'm just thinking, you know, being in education myself, we knew it was going to be really cold out, but I'm just thinking if there's an, if there's a snow day where maybe they're predicting two inches and we get 20, how, how would teachers like in an instant get assignments? You know what I'm saying? Like if there isn't as much lead time, do you think we would have an e-learning day in a situation like that? And how would we, would we be able to prepare?
We've talked about that, and I think that was part of our feedback sessions, and some things that we need to prepare. It's kind of the same instance though of teachers having a sub-plan prepared, right? You don't know if something's going to happen on the way to school, and so we require every teacher to have an emergency sub-plan as well. So we talked about teachers creating an e-learning folder and trying to keep as much of their stuff either in SchoolAG or in Google Classroom so that it would be quickly available to students. Now that we're a fully one-to-one school, I mean, we should still be able to get to 90% or so of our students and have an e-learning assignment updated. I mean, like my stu, my, my kid's school closed and does an e-learning day on short notice, and so what they do is they just, they change that attendance window so they give staff some time to get assignments up and upload it to SchoolAG, and then students have to log in. So you just move the window, the windows and the hours of operation from when kids have to log in, but you should still be able to do this. Let's hope we don't need any more e-learning days the rest of the year.
We also have a plan to go over at grade level assemblies at the beginning of each semester, and then have teachers follow up in the classroom, because we realize that you have to continually remind students of where to go and what to do in the event you have to use it last minute.
As, as what I stated also to the staff, and I think it'd be important to say on TV, our first priority is to still have school. So we're going to try to have school when, even when the weather is inclement as much as possible. Our second priority, if not to have school, that they would then go to a late start, which we implemented on Monday when there was the snow, because nothing can replace students interacting with their classmates and their teachers. So my, my thought process as we work through this is, you know, have school, second option, late start, and then third option obviously is close and possibly an e-learning day. But I don't want people to think that we're going to throw in these e-learning days whenever the wind's, you know, blowing in the wrong direction or it drops below a certain temperature. The goal is still to have school.
You know, following up on Kevin's point about how you would prepare in the future, like Kevin, what did you do or what, I guess you had to do it, and some teachers were probably sick on Wednesday, that Wednesday and Thursday. So what do you do to give an assignment if the teacher was unavailable?
I actually don't think that we had to deal with that this past time. We did have a plan for that, because you still have to create sub-plans when you're out. And so the teacher, if the teacher was sick, the teacher would still be responsible for creating sub-plans and putting them on SchoolAG, so an activity for students to do. And then each teacher shared their attendance sheet with their instructional coach, so then their instructional coach would be responsible for giving that attendance information to our attendance secretary.
Thank you.
So with that, I noticed even we were worried about the attendance going down on Thursday or Wednesday, but it was still the highest attendance of the, of the week. So, but to reiterate Kevin's point, I don't think, you know, you could substitute being in school.
Second point, was there any feedback on the 10-month employees? For the 10-month employees that didn't get to work?
The 10-month employees that either chose to take a personal day, or they all chose to come in for one of the institute days, and our Director of Special Education and Assistant Principal of Student Affairs puts to get either some activities together or some training together. So there were enough options where they could pick something where they weren't already planning on working, you know, like prom or graduation. That's why we added the institute days after hearing some of their feedback.
Okay.
I just want to add the comment, I'm glad we have the option to close. We always have this discussion. This school like never closes. Three feet of snow, six feet of water, 20 below. It's just not safe to come here, and I'm glad, you know, we can say we can close, and they can stay at home, and everybody stays safe. So again, thank you. You know, you shouldn't have to go through amazing feats to get here.
Okay, is that any more comments? All right, thank you. Let's move on. Chief Financial Officer report.
Scott's going to present the traditional chief financial report, and then I'm going to ask that Kristen present the forecast, five financial projections.
Okay, good evening, Board. Today I'd like to highlight the January 2019 financials. The first report that you will see on Board Book page 24 is the monthly financial report. Total revenue for the month was $588,000. If you look at what revenue came in, the state gave us our evidence-based funding money and made some payments for special ed, private facility, and special education transportation. That was our first payment this year from the state for special ed, private facility, and special ed transportation.
How many more are we, did you budget for?
We have budgeted four total payments, one from last year, the last payment, and then three payments from this year, so we're still chasing two payments from the state, and hopefully they come through with paying by June 30th.
So we got the one from last year, and we got, this is the first one for this?
From this year.
So we have four months to make two payments.
To receive two payments from the state.
What's the likelihood of that happening?
We'll get a state of it.
I think for sure we're going to get, I think for sure we'll get the, the third payment. It's just a matter of will the fourth payment come in before?
It could come in after June 30th.
And what weeks, what are the amounts of the payments?
It's roughly $140,000 between special ed, private facility, and special ed transportation total.
Per payment?
Yes.
So if they only do three, it will be $140,000 sure?
Yes.
Well, our new governor said he's, I mean, the board priority is funding education.
Funding education, he did.
We'll see.
Expenditures, Scott?
On the expenditure side, we had $1.89 million. Once again, salary and benefits account for the majority of our expenditures. That was 1.49. And out of district tuition for the month of January was $75,000. Our operating fund balance at the end of January is $12,692,950. Just remember that the board has restricted $3 million in the working cash fund towards future land acquisitions, possibly from the county, which would bring it to 9.692. If we move on to Board Book page 25, that is the financial statement showing our beginning fund balance, adding in revenue year-to-date and expenditures year-to-date in all funds, summarizing it. Moving on to the revenue side.
Would you mind answering the question I asked on that page? What was that page?
Negative 3 million under revenues and expenditures.
Million, 3 million.
Yeah.
Is that a problem?
It's not a problem because we're still waiting for 55% of our revenue with current year property taxes with it. It was very similar to what last year's was if you were to take out the working cash bond that was issued with it. So it's not a concern yet on it, because we are still going to collect 55% of our revenue with our current, current year levy.
Well, this January and February tend to be the low points of the fund balance each year, correct?
Exactly.
We haven't seen a second.
We don't get a second payment until the March 1st due date, when people start paying, and then Cook County will, or the county here, and we'll start distributing funds a month later-ish, right? Sometime.
We have started receiving our current year one, so you'll see that in our next month's financial report.
For those who really pay, okay.
On the revenue side, tracking at 48%, I know there was a question submitted that we're at 58% of our budget, and last year we were at 61%. That includes the $3 million working cash bond that was issued. If you took out the working cash bond, we were at 49%, and we're currently sitting at 48% of operating revenue on it, so we're tracking pretty consistent with it.
Thank you.
On the expenditure side, we are tracking right at exactly what we did last year with it, if everything comes in with it, knock on wood, that we don't have any major expenditures that hit. We should come right in at budget or better. Moving on to the revenue expense report that follows the financial statements. There was a question submitted on Board Book page 28 in regards to prior year levies. On it, in all fund areas, we're about 1% off of what was budgeted. Some of the issues that we could have here is if we pick up some late property tax payments on it, received from our taxpayers, it's going to bring down the amount that we have that currently that we're under budget on it. With that, it should bring it much closer to 100% of budget on it, so I'm not a concern overly with it, but being within 1% of what the budget is, I think that's a pretty good estimate as to where our prior year levies are. I think that's pretty close. I know last year at this time, we were at 93%. So after doing some adjustments from last year and working with various people to try to say, let's get a better handle on this, we're definitely much closer to what was budgeted. And like I said, if we pick up some late property taxes that people still are paying, that'll bring us even closer to 100%. There were no other questions submitted on the revenue expense. Following the revenue expense is the student activity accounts. Only one account in the negative, and we've known that for a while now, that's the alumni achievement. It'll continue to sit there until we take care of it, but there were no questions submitted on the student activity accounts.
All right, the next report that I'm going to ask Kristen to be sent, she'll be dealing with the financials next year. This is the PMA report. PMA is a financial advisor that works for the district. We do an annual contract with PMA. They handle our five-year projections. Normally when we, we've done these PMA projections since I've been the superintendent here, just to give the board a kind of worst-case scenario, a conservative look at our financial future and projections. One of the concerns that came up in the past with the projections is they are, they usually are formatted in a way that provides a worst-case scenario. So one thing that we did with updating these projections, and Kristen will speak to it, is we, we tried to use as real numbers as possible in how we did our budget this year. And so the format that we took was instead of going financial projections from 19 to 24, we stuck, we stuck with the financial projections from last year of FY '18 through '23, and we updated them with real numbers from FY '18 and the real numbers of FY '19, which is the current fiscal year we're in, and how we're tracking. And then we wanted to provide the projections for '20, '21, '22, and '23. So Kristen will give you an idea of the assumptions and the data that was inputted in this, and then how our financial projections and fund balance look over the next four years.
All right, so I'd like to start on page 63 of Board Book. So this is going over the projections that we gave roughly this time last year. So I'd like to begin by looking at the first column going down, which is fiscal year '18. As you can see, a year ago, we were projecting to have a deficit in fiscal year '18 of roughly $341,000. As some of you may remember, we ended with a surplus of roughly $636,000 due to receiving a lot of additional unexpected revenue. So that was the year where we got a huge tax payment in July when it was supposed to be received in June. So that resulted in a lot of extra revenue. Also, the state made five payments for special education because they hadn't made their four payments the year before. And this was under general state aid, so we were actually getting more money in special ed payments under the new evidence-based funding, more of it shifted to there, so that's why that money is bigger than the 140 that you just heard from Scott. And then this year, the state fully funded general state aid for the first time, resulting in additional money as well. So usually it's rare for one of those things to happen, and all three of them happened in the same year, so that resulted in the surplus. Had we not received that money, we would have had a slightly bigger deficit than what we were projecting. There were two questions that were submitted on this page. The first question was about the $3 million in working cash. So at this time, the fiscal year budget, when that was created in the summer, we hadn't issued the bonds yet. And when we did the projection, we didn't issue those until the winter. And then when we did the projections, we still were operating off of the old budget because that wasn't amended until May. And so that's why these projections reflect the 3 million. The second question was about the beginning fund balance. So that is the cash fund balance from the operating funds, so that's the ed fund, operations and maintenance, transportation, IMR, social security, and working cash.
Marian, is there a chance you could make that like 130, even if the last row is not on the screen, just so it's a little bigger for the audience? Even go a little bigger, 135, 140?
If you get the picture, I see those brackets.
Stay positive, Mr. Grigson, stay positive. Okay, so that was from 2018. So now you want to go through your assumptions?
Yes.
Before you go through, because you're going to have two pages go to a very similar-looking chart. This one says aggregate. The other one lists certain funds, so can you tell what's the difference between the aggregate and what we get? You can wait till we get to the other one, but why there's two charts in here.
I think that's just a, I'm pretty, yeah, so I will go on to the next, the projections, assumptions. Marian, this is going to rest with you because it doesn't necessarily need to be zoomed in, but we can leave it that way. So this is the page where we explain all of the different assumptions that we use to build our projections for the updated projections on fiscal year '19, as well as fiscal years '20 through '23. Not going to read all of them, just highlight the significant ones that either have changed or have a big impact. The first would be the Consumer Price Index. We do know the rate, so it has been updated to 1.9%. It was originally at 2% for the levy year in 2019, and then we left it at 2% for the remaining years. Each 1% is approximately almost $200,000. And then EAV, new construction, so previously in that oldest, that old projection that you saw, we had that at 200,000. Based off of our historical information, we've updated that to be 1.5 million. We only received 2% of this money, so that would roughly generate $30,000 additional in operating tax revenue.
With regards to that, and with regards to the state of malls, should we be touching base with?
We met with them in October.
People who know and to see what the potential EA value of the mall is headed, projecting?
Scott and I met with them in October with our Tax Appeals Group and with the Village of North Riverside.
And what's the general assessment? Putting in, putting in video games is going to make save the mall?
No, but I don't think you'll see those changes till later in regards to the EAV, and I'm not sure if that EAV.
Well, you got, you got a five-year projection here.
Right.
So is it going to impact in these years?
Possibly towards '22 or '23, but we did not adjust for that in '22 or '23. We need to confirm that with North Riverside.
Yeah, I would suggest you do that, especially with the tenants you have, the tenants that are in.
But they did not have any data for us in October. Right, Scott? Did you have any update on that? Right, Scott, did you have any update on that?
Our attorneys are involved with it. Any type of information that I get with it is forwarded off to the attorneys.
I know, but they're, I mean, they're making a conscious decision not to replace them with retail, right?
Retail, going in a different direction with it.
And the question would be, what's that going to have an impact on EAV? And so I would suggest, again, not knowing, so I would just suggest you... Kick tires on that.
Thank you.
Under the expenditure...
Hold on a second, Kristen. I, I'm wondering, we need a little more information. Who is telling you that somebody like Sears isn't going to, you know, protest its taxes for four or five years? They're going to say that the value of retail space is going down and try to get their taxes reduced? I don't see why they would wait. Or I don't even know who, if it's Carson Stalons or whoever.
That's why, that's why I raised the issue. That's his point. They need to go.
Right, but in our, in our projections, we kept the property tax appeals still, it's in there in the budget of projections at the three hundred thousand, the board budget.
I know, but you...
In regards to asking them, like right now, we're still dealing with their property tax appeal from like three years ago. So we won't know because of the timelines for filing whether or not, they usually file every year an appeal. So I don't know if there's a way really to put in here the property tax appeals.
Well, I was just looking at the...
You're looking at retail.
Looking at the EAV and if, you know, it's going up, you changed it from, you know, what we've historically now to one point five, is the EAV going to go the other way?
Right.
With the, the value of the malls?
And there's two, there's two ways that you can appeal taxes. One, you're talking about they have to go through the whole process and go through a hearing. The other one is they appeal it like any taxpayer can upfront, and they, I don't know why they wouldn't get adjustments at the value of retail spaces going down without having to go through the...
That's a fair...
Board of Appeals.
But Tim, that tends, the appeals tend to take forever, right? I mean, we're still dealing with the Riverside Golf Course, still not getting theirs through yet. So, you know, I, I think, I was, I was just titling the EAV situation, which, you know, I don't know how long that takes. And I'm not an expert at this, and I know they, you know, so I'm just raising that next, you know, to kick tires on that and keep aware of that, especially with their, the way they're, they're spacing out the retail to different ways now.
Seems like we're going the wrong way. We're making it higher, but maybe we shouldn't keep it the same.
This, this EAV that we made higher, though, is just for the new construction.
New construction.
Didn't change the EAV for the other...
Right, because we were too low, and the number we had in there was significantly under than what the EAV came in at. So this is strictly for just new construction.
All right.
Ready for expenditures? Okay. So for the expenditure assumptions, when you see the projections, it's important to note that we have it set with staff salaries increasing at three percent per year. So that's administrators, teachers, and non-certified staff. Stipends increasing at one percent for fiscal year twenty and twenty-one. We've been working with our insurance cooperative, EBC, and we have a rough estimate for our insurance costs for fiscal year twenty increasing at five percent. And then for the underwriter, we left it at six and a half percent for the remaining years. And when you see the projections, all of the staffing will reflect not only the retirements, but if we're adding FTE or decreasing FTE for that particular year. There was a question on the working cash, but I'll be able to address that on the next page. So if you go to the next page, page sixty-five in Board Book, this is the same chart from one year to the next. They just changed the title at the top of the chart. But it is the same chart with the same information, except for the fact that we've updated the projections. So if you look at fiscal year nineteen, on the, a year ago, we were projecting to have roughly a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar deficit for fiscal year nineteen. As you can see, that's been updated to two hundred and fourteen, and that is due to some special education out of district tuition costs, which is why the deficit has been adjusted.
When we originally budgeted, in the budget that was approved in September, the projection was two thirty-one in our budget.
Correct.
So we're on, based on the current information, we're on, we're on track to come in under budget.
Mm-hmm. And the reason we, one of the reasons we saved some cost is we had a teacher take a year-long leave of absence for maternity leave. So we saved some money on the sub-cost there. And so if you look at fiscal year twenty, you will see that we are projecting a deficit of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So there's a question on the two point eight million dollars. So in order to reflect accurate fund balances, we transferred that to our capital projects so that it wasn't impacting the overall fund balance percentages at the bottom. The reason the title other financing, financing sources is a little misleading, but that is the state title that's used on the state budget form. And so what that category is used for is interest income, bonds, and transfers. And so we do have the money, we're just transferring it to capital projects to make sure that our fund balances are, represent an accurate picture of the available money that we have. And so as you can see, each year, given our current assumptions, we'll be running a deficit fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We're projected to run a seven hundred and thirty thousand dollar deficit fiscal year four, twenty-two, four hundred and seventy-nine, and then fiscal year twenty-three at two nineteen. If you see on the bottom, you can see the fund balances as a percent of expenditures. So every year, we're getting closer to the board policy, which is thirty-three percent. And so it also provides you an estimate of how many months we can operate that percent of fund balance. On the next page...
Before we go to that page, I'd like to just show the board FY twenty compared to two thousand and eighteen. So you see that there is an increase in the deficit that was projected and from the two thousand and eighteen projections. So the one, one thing is, is that based on our enrollment projections with the students coming in, we had to add two FTEs. So even though we have two FTEs retiring, there's no cost savings because you have to, hiring two teachers to replace them plus an additional two for the increased enrollment. So that's the additional cost, was Kristen explained in the bottom of her chart. Sorry, Kristen, continue.
That's okay, so...
Yeah, but, but the biggest increase, isn't it, in other? I mean, you originally had a seven point one million, now it's seven point six. So what is the additional five hundred thousand out of seven million?
Where are you looking at?
I'm looking at the two charts.
Well, you also have the increase from out of district special education that also was not factored into the old projection, that is now updated into the new projection. So that was a hundred and twenty...
Special education becoming a big enough number. I don't know, maybe we should start showing that as a separate line item.
So that, that's part of it as well.
Thank you, Gary.
I've always heard...
You said, how much was that, a hundred and something?
Roughly a hundred and twenty, I think.
See what he's pointing out, if you look at your first chart, it's seven million thirty-one thousand in fiscal twenty-nine for that number, and in this new chart, it's seven million five hundred ninety-seven. So it's...
So the other thing you have to keep in mind is because fiscal year nineteen costs went up, now all the projections are recalculated because if those costs went up, then the following year, those costs are going to go up as well.
I understand that, but...
That's where the big difference was.
Why, then you have to explain, why did the fiscal nineteen go up? Because you're explaining one hundred and fifty out of six hundred thousand. So what's the other four fifty?
So in FY eighteen, Scott, the number was only seven million, and in FY nineteen, it's updated with the real numbers. And I think that's because the evidence-based funding collapsed that all into one. Would that be accurate, or is it...
No, this is on the expenditure side, so with it, we'd have to look at that. But that, that number, like you said, was adjusted to all the different expenditures that were either under budgeted in eighteen and then adjusted in nineteen to capture all that. We could go through and get exactly every single expenditure that would hit that.
Right, but I mean, again, eighteen's, eighteen, we weren't that far off. You know, take the fact that, that we got a lot of revenue in, but the expenditure is what we budgeted to what we actually incurred. You know, we were, we were pretty dead on with our expenses.
Right, we were within fifty thousand.
So we're always, we're always dead on with our expenses. The game, the issue we always have is when revenue is going to come into fiscal year. So now, all of a sudden, eighteen hadn't changed much. Granted, we got additional special ed coming in of a hundred plus, but to go up in the projections, almost five hundred thousand, you know, I'd be interested to understand what that's about, especially with the fact is on the seven million dollar budget, you're talking, you know, five hundred increase, you know, it's a percent.
And I know you have airmarks increase, you have, you increase in transportation costs.
Yeah, but airmark says CPI, all right?
Two percent of a million.
But, you know, you start adding those up, they have quickly...
We'll get an answer. Let's not guess, we'll just, we'll look back, backload it out.
Two examples.
So...
Right, I understand, but...
Am I wrong? Airmark's a million dollars a year, right?
So if you take, you take CPI on a seven million, what is that? Two percent is a hundred and forty plus the hundred and fifty on special ed. You're only talking about two hundred to three hundred increase, not the five hundred increase. So you're double, you're running at four percent increases, not CPI increases. All right, anyways.
Everybody's got a cough, anybody need it?
We get back to this seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar deficit. Well, this is a number of times we've seen this chart, right? I think, I think I saw it for twenty twenty, at a million three was the first time I saw this chart. The second time was minus four hundred and ninety thousand, and now it's minus seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Stop looking at the chart. Your cost is money.
As a guy, as a guy who voted against deficit spending, we're not going to get out of the deficit spending, right? And we're not going to get five payments from the state.
Every year.
Let's just assume that, right?
Right.
Are we going to get five payments, Gina?
Never.
We got it last year.
None.
Why don't we get...
Because they were delinquent the year before.
Yes.
Yeah, and Pritzker, he can't turn around an aircraft carrier on a dime. So like, don't think it's going to change just because he's there, right?
Well, I think, I mean, how long is that sustainable? Is the question, right? How long can we sustain that before we, we pay out that eleven million, you know, fund balance or...
Right, and I think, I think the next board's going to have to face issues, whether to look what happened, you know, to, to look at the staffing levels down the road, to look at the plan that you're going to have some debt rolling off, and maybe you turn that to saying, okay, taxpayers, you're going to have a decrease in your taxes, but now we need to move to the operational side. Would you be open for a referendum? You guys are going to have to face some choices.
Can we reduce the slope a little bit by cutting costs? I mean, we don't want to do that eight years ago.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm saying. You got choices. You look to either increase revenue or you cut costs.
Well, I'm going to have a hard time going down my block knocking on doors and asking for more tax dollars.
Or you got the, you know, the idea is you have debt rolling off.
Yes.
And add that, that, it's a tax savings to the tax, that debt's going to go away with years...
Twenty-three or twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, and it's a, you know, you guys should assess what that impact is on a, you know, now at this time.
We had those charts from...
Right, how much is, how much is it going to decrease?
Well, the, the only thing that's changed for the board from FY, with the projections we did in eighteen now in nineteen, is that one year, those, the deficits have slightly increased because of the addition of the two, the increase in enrollment. But when we gave this projection to the board back last January, we were preparing to that deficit spending was going to become a reality here, even though over the last seven out of the eight years of my tenure, we've had, we've, were able to, you know, go finish each year with a surplus. So we were preparing the board to show you that, how long we can go with the current fund balance until we're going to have to take some type of action.
Right.
Now, one of the things we had thrown out there last year, and obviously this is just throwing it out there, we're not, we're four or five years from this, but Gary's right, when that major debt comes off from the fifty-five million dollar building referendum and the working cash bonds, or twenty-three or twenty-four, there's an opportunity to do a small tax increase and still save the taxpayers some money. But we still need to be financially responsible because if there's any legislation changes or the state makes three payments instead of five payments, or they don't fund evidence-based funding anymore, or shift pensions, that the numbers in red can only, will only go up, right? I mean, we got a possibility under FY twenty at seven twenty-nine. Let's say we get a, a perfect storm and that, we get a hundred percent of tax collection, so there's an additional two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand. Let's say we get all four payments, right? I mean, we're, even if all revenues come in at a hundred percent, we'll still have a deficit somewhere in, in the three hundred to four hundred thousand range.
More than that?
Hmm, roughly four twenty.
Roughly four twenty?
Okay, but let's...
But that's if a perfect storm...
And enrollment's still going up, we're not projecting it to come down to twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, if, if it didn't trust those projections to come down.
Well, let's make sure that we're clear on something here. We have a high degree of confidence that we didn't overestimate our expenditures or revenues this time.
Right, that's why we went through that.
We can't sit here hoping we're going to get more than ninety-nine percent because we did ninety-nine percent because that was pretty exactly close to what we collected over several years, right?
Five-year trend.
So we don't want to paint some rosy picture that if the moon aligns with the sun or something, we're going to get down to four hundred thousand deficit because that's extremely unlikely. This is what we think is going to happen on here, right?
Correct.
So the question for the board is, you got two big years of deficit and then it goes down some. You know, how much is the board willing to stomach on a deficit spending for the next two years, right? And, you know, what can we do to try to manage that number so we don't get seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars? Is that correct?
Correct.
Am I saying something that's wrong?
Nope.
I mean, I don't want to paint it, I, I think we spent a lot of effort in the last two years, working hard to get the numbers that we think are accurate, especially after we had some big swings. Is it possible we'll get a fifth payment? It's possible, but it's extremely unlikely. Is it possible at a hundred percent? It's possible, but it's extremely unlikely. It would be out of the ordinary for anything we've seen in the years we've been looking at. So this is what we really think is going to happen if we spend the money the way that we're budgeting or we projected it for, for the next fiscal year, right?
The other thing to consider is, we just talked about best-case scenario, you could also do the reverse and talk about worst-case scenario, right? We don't get a special ed payment, we, our tax collection drops to ninety-eight point five percent or ninety-eight percent.
You only get three payments from the state.
We need to hire a couple more special ed? Support people or special ed teachers next year, right?
Yeah, deficit can go up.
Could, could go up even higher.
So this deficit takes into account then our three percent increase that we're projecting with the new contract?
Correct.
Right, we haven't negotiated any increase with the new contract yet.
But that's...
So this is just a projection.
An assumption that three percent is pretty much the norm.
No, we're not saying it's the norm.
It's the norm that we've used in, in assumptions when making...
In assum, I'm talking about not the norm of a contract, but when you make assumptions, that's usually the norm, three percent.
That's what we have been using in, in this year and years past, yes.
So if we reduce that percent at all, we could plausibly reduce that a little bit.
Yes, that could be one way. Anytime you reduce an expenditure, yes, you would reduce the deficit.
So for instance, two point one is the projected CPI for next year, right? We already know the number.
It's one point nine.
One point nine, excuse me, but we've still projected...
You get half a two point one and half a one point nine.
Two one this year, one nine next year, but we projected three percent in the salary.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, anytime we increase over CPI, it's never good for us.
Anytime you increase over CPI...
It's just not.
You, you know, you're done a deficit spend. It's just the reality. We have more, you know, our salaries will increase at a higher rate. You know, I think Tim, Tim brings up a good thing, and my comments earlier were similar to like Tim's comments of it could be worse, and then we don't get any of those payments and that number can go up. The ra, the reason behind my comments is perfect storm, or everything aligned, even there still will be a deficit. So what I'm basically, I just want to make sure the board understands is when we're doing this projection for... we're doing this projection for you, like, I don't see there, unless, which, which is, would go against what we've been doing here, and we, and we're okay, we're okay fund balance-wise, but we need to start looking at this because deficits are inevitable at this point.
Can, can we ever see this model just hold into CPI for increase? I mean, what would it look like if we held to CPI?
You can't project five years out of CPI.
Right.
It's what we, a big part of it is, you know, what the, we can negotiate with the RBEA as far as salaries go.
So you're saying, you want to say what the deficit would be at CPI?
Yeah, so if we, yeah...
It might be five hundred thousand, and that might be a palatable number to you.
Yeah, what would it look like if, you know, we go on our negotiations and say, we did, we have to stay pair, we have to achieve some kind of parity with our CPI increase?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but I think the number's roughly a hundred thousand dollars for every one percent increase in the salary we offer them, is that right?
For the teachers.
Yeah, so if we go CPI, it's basically, we save a hundred thousand dollars.
Just for the teachers.
Just for the teachers.
I think, I think...
But the, the issue is not just salary, right? We've been bringing on staff because of the enrollment size. So, you know, you're adding, with fully, with fully loaded benefits, you know, somewhere in the range of, let's just say, for purposes of argument here, seventy-five thousand to eighty thousand dollars.
Because we want to keep that ratio of student to teacher.
Right, so that's a, that's another six point six of a percent, right? Roughly, if you, if you're using, I think it's actually a little higher, you know, a hundred, my number is probably closer to a hundred and eighty is one percent, but I know.
So we might have to start looking at maybe a class size of twenty-two.
Well, I mean, that's a decision, I think, this is, I think this is a reck, to recognize that, you know, you know, back eight years ago, when we came on the board, it was this idea of having a referendum. We proved out that we can manage through this, but I think you're getting to a point now where, between enrollment and the fact that we've been living off of very small CPI increases and things like that, this time, it's coming to, to fruition, and it's going to be the next board's going to look it over, scrub it, look it over, and come up with a decision how they want to run, go forward with it.
I think, I think there's something, you know, I've been here now eight years, so education moves in cycles, it's cyclical, right? So in two thousand and eleven, the board, and before I arrived, there was a failed referendum, we had a two million dollar deficit, we took all the necessary steps with staffing, pay to participate, class sizes.
Alternative revenue sources, yeah.
Alternative, so we did all those things, and now we've kind of used up that extra revenue, we've used...
Scrubbed every contract.
Right, so we've gotten some things, we've worked with the RBA for two, two, three-year agreements, so it, it's just to bring, like, I think Gary's saying, it's, at some point, we may have to revisit, is the twenty-five to one in core classes manageable, or do we have to go back to thirty to one? You know, those are different things. If the board says it's, you know, listen, we don't want to do that, then we have to look at...
Or do you go out to the public and say, look, you're going to roll off a debt, it's costing you X per hundred thousand dollars of home value, can we switch that off into costing you Y, and it's going to go into the operation fund? But that would mean it'd be a referendum, because that, that's automatically going to roll off, and you would have to actually go out there and ask for a referendum.
But you know, eight years, when we, when we did it, we took away every program practically. The prob, we didn't have as much tax debt from our other feeder schools, and I want to say the median income in the communities, I want to say, has dropped in the past eight years in some of our communities.
Yeah, but if you remember the time the tax referendum, that was, you know, that was the great recession or whatever, right? So a lot of people were losing homes and...
Right, but now, I think the median income is lower now than it was eight years ago.
I, I don't know, I don't have stats to say that whether or not, so, I don't think so, I don't have stats, but anyways.
We can't control that anymore.
No, but what I'm saying is, there's less likely of passing a referendum now than...
I think, I think the point is, we're raising, we're showing a fiber projection. It's something for, as you get the new board on, to have a discussion, and it's not immediate. I mean, we, the fund balance has been built up, so it's not an immediate crisis, it's just something to start thinking about and planning, so.
But I think that understanding is, we have to be careful and take a hard look at all of our expenditures and costs to try to keep the deficit as low as, as reasonable, right? Is that what people are saying?
So...
Well, and I, and I, and we've done a pretty good job, you guys have done a good job in the last four years, and we've done a good job this last, I mean, we were counting telephones last year, that's how we were saving money, right? I mean, literally, we did that. Scott did it.
Right.
Okay. You know, I'd like to see the enrollment projection. The last thing I have was like, going up to twenty seventeen, I mean, are those available?
You have, you got an enrollment projection in November, all the way up to twenty-three.
Yeah, it's in November, from November?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so actually, we start declining, that's why you see the deficit start to take a dip in twenty-two and in twenty-three, because we take a teacher or two off the books based on enrollment numbers are scheduled to decline. Now, if new families move in, or there's transfers, I mean, that can always change, but...
I kind of like that one chart where you give us all, all the feeder schools.
Yes, that's the one we give out, and we have, from kindergarten, we track from kindergarten through eighth grade for feeder schools. And we gave that to you in November, John, it should be on the website.
It's on the website.
Mine's a little dated, but I, but I've got it.
Kristen, do you want to skip to expenditure analysis? Is there anything specific you want to touch on?
There wasn't really anything specific on either one of them. It just breaks it down in a different way of looking at it.
And if we could, when you get a chance, you and Scott, look back at FY eighteen's presentation, I'm wondering on the expenditure analysis, if that might figure out where it went from seven to seven-five. Because on your expenditure analysis, on this page, it breaks down some of those other, so I'm wondering, that may give us a better answer, and we could send it out in a Friday update to the board, okay?
And some of these expenditures are kind of out of our control, right?
Right, but I'm thinking...
Special ed has been a, a, a big driver, right?
I'm thinking there was that four hundred thousand we took out of working cash or capital projects last year, with the roughing with the...
Scott has some of that information.
I can give you the difference between what was projected in eighteen, what eighteen's budget was to nineteen's difference. For example, out-of-district tuition, actually, from budget to budget, was four hundred thousand dollars difference. Ladsy purchase service, from budget to budget, is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars difference.
Well, there's five thirty-five right there.
And then if you add in, airmarks had twenty-five thousand with the CPI, then you have, we increased IMRF fund, that reflect what our non-certified staff is, that was twenty-six thousand, and then transportation was twenty-five thousand dollar increase just for the special ed transportation. So if you add all those up, that gives you roughly your six hundred thousand.
Thank you.
There you go, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Good job.
Is that it on the, the financial projections? You answered all the questions that were submitted?
Yes, that is it.
Okay. New business?
New business. Student handbook, first read.
So this is a first read of the student handbook.
Oh, wait, we have to do visitor's comments.
Oh, that's right, let's move on. I'm sorry, yeah, we jumped. Visitor's comment, anyone wish to speak? Because I don't have to read the rules. So let's go, discussion, discussion information items present, anyone to my left? Anyone to my right? No? All right. Old, let's go to old business, life safety items, capital improvements. I was doing the right orders, were you trying to jump me around?
Sorry about that.
You just didn't want to talk about it, did you?
There is no updates, I shared when Tim asked the question on facilities.
All right, new business, student handbook, let's get there now. All right.
So this is the first read of the student handbook, we present this on an annual basis. It's, we have a committee that reviews it, which is comprised of student staff, administrators, board member, and they met on various occasions. Committee's listed on the bottom of page seventy in Board Book. But basically, there are two accompanying documents. The first is a summary of what we call major or more significant revisions, and the next is a track change version, so you can see all of the minor changes that we make, title changes, grammar changes, things of that nature. There really isn't a whole lot of new changes this year. The first one is on Board Book, page seventy-one, that we are cutting and pasting some language from our Chromebook user agreement into our handbook, now that all students have Chromebooks. Just reminder of expectations, but then also where students can go should their Chromebook be inoperable. Change number two is the, probably the most significant, and it's just some minor tweaks to our final exam exemption procedures. We've added some clarifying language based upon student questions, and then also, we've added a tardy component, so students cannot have more than fifteen tardies for the semester in order to qualify for the exam exemption. And then also, we've added that if a student has an unverified absence, that they have two weeks to clear that. So what's, what was happening was, a student goes on a college visit in October, and then in December, they come and try to clear that college visit, and we get inundated with requests, and so we're trying to eliminate that. And then the last change, now that we are no longer giving all students the ACT test, we've removed that input SAT benchmarks. Change number three is just adding language to provide guidelines to parents from the health office as to when they have a sick student, what symptoms they should look for to keep a student home. We showed that out via email of parents at the start of the year, and we've received some feedback that that was helpful, so we've added that to the handbook. And then also, new, next year, the incoming freshman class, class of two thousand and twenty-three, the state has now required that they provide us a dental exam, and so we've added that language into the handbook as well. Those are the only changes that we're proposing.
When I was looking at this, one of the things that I questioned, and I know it's early in the game, but e-learning days and absence, should, down the road, as this gets refined out, should there be, so if they don't sign in, is that an, an absence? So it was something I just, in general picture, and how you would address that in this thing.
So we tried to lightly, given we had just done e-learning with the handbook, and so for closures and stuff, we put just e-learning, we just referenced it in there. We didn't, because we haven't really debriefed and talked about changes that we wanted to make, we tried to keep that vague for next year.
Right, I didn't, I didn't, it was just something...
We should probably put, though, a statement that there, students will be, if students did, in the event of an e-learning day, students that don't log in will be marked absent, or will need to call in as an absence. You know, we should. We know we, we have enough that we could put at least something that their, their attendance is still required on an e-learning day.
Correct.
Yeah, I just thought next year type of thing, ponder that, put that, but not this year because of the learning process that we're learning through on it.
So you need the final draft approved next mon, in two weeks?
Yes.
At the March meeting. Okay.
All right, sounds good. Matters for closed session, personnel, student discipline, purchase sale, lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. This is a chance for visitors, again, seeing none, I will go to consideration of items for future meetings. One to my left, my right? Nope. Can I get a motion to go into closed?
Resolve that the board education township high school district two-way Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees to the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second. Go for the vote?
Yes.
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 All right, how about we get down there?